Welcome to Duncanville City Council Special Meeting, held in the City Council Briefing Room. I'm sorry, we are in council chambers and we are Facebook Live, as I understand it as well. So, thank you very much for any of those that are online. Welcome to our special meeting today. In accordance with an order of the Office of the Governor issued March 16th, 2020, is extended, the City Council for the City of Duncanville, Texas will conduct a City Council Special Meeting in person and by video conference at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 30th, 2021, in order to advance the public health goal of limiting face-to-face meetings, also called social distancing, in an effort to slow the spread of coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. This is an open meeting conducted in person and by video conference. To speak by video conference during Citizen Comments, you must have registered with the City Secretary before 4:00 PM Tuesday. City Secretary, had anybody registered? No one has registered, okay. For the record, we do have a quorum. With the absence of a Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Harvey is not available to attend tonight. Other than that, all City Council members are present. Pursuant to Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the City Council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the Act prohibits the City Council from deliberating on issues not on the public agenda, and such non-agenda items may be referred to City staff for research in any future action. All persons addressing this are subject to City Council adopted rules and limitations by law. At this time, Council will take comments from any citizens present, and individuals are limited to two minutes per the bylaws of the City of Duncanville. Any individuals present that wish to speak? Thank you. Seeing none, we will move on to item number two on our agenda, regular session. Item number 2A, Discussion on Redistricting and the City's Legal Obligations and Adoption of Redistricting Principles and Guidelines. The individual, Mr. Garcia, our Economic Development Director, is going to introduce someone to give, our consultant, to give us understanding and direction as we move forward. Mr. Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, Augustine Garcia, with Department of Economic Development, Planning, Zoning, and Legislative Advocacy. We're here tonight to talk about the redistricting efforts that have been taking place throughout the city and through staff, and so we have brought a consultant with Bickerstaff Heath, Delgado, and Acosta. We have Mr. Joshua Katz here to do a presentation before Council.
His name again, please?
Joshua Katz.
Joshua Katz.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Katz? Thank you, yes, appreciate that. Good evening, Council and Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all tonight. My name is Josh Katz, and I'm with the law firm Bickerstaff Heath, Delgado, Acosta. I'm based out of Austin, but our firm has offices in El Paso, and Houston, and in the Valley in South Texas. So, thank you for having us here. I'm going to present to you a couple of things. The first thing we're going to do is I'm going to give you what's up on your screen right now, which is what we call the initial assessment for redistricting. And the initial assessment, we'll kind of walk you through the law regarding redistricting as it stands today. We're going to talk a bit about the Federal Voting Rights Act. We'll talk about the Constitution and the requirements it imposes on cities, and counties, and school districts, and groundwater districts, and really any kind of governmental entity that has single-member districts. And so, we're going to, I'm going to give you a presentation on what the law is regarding redistricting. Then, we're going to go into the City of Duncanville's data. We're going to look at the census data that just came out from the U.S. Census Bureau in August of 2021, because that really is what drives redistricting. Every 10 years, so just to give you a little backup a little bit, my firm represents governmental entities. I represent cities in central Texas mostly, but we are an outside law firm that represents governments, local governments. And so, every 10 years when the census comes out, we go around the state helping cities and school districts, community college districts, counties evaluate what their redistricting needs are, and then deliver this presentation, kind of assessing what those needs are, and then we're going to help you adopt two things. First, tonight, we're going to adopt criteria that will help you evaluate a redistricting plan, any redistricting plan that we're going to present and talk about. The second thing we'll adopt tonight is a resolution that gives members of the public the guidelines that the city will require if anyone from the public wants to present a plan of their own, which is great, that kind of public input. In many places, there's a lot of public engagement. In a lot of places, there's not, and either one is fine, but if members of the public wish to present their own, you know, plan of what they think the district boundaries should look like, there's just things that we want. For example, and we'll talk about this throughout the presentation, but you can't change the boundaries of one district without changing the boundaries of another. And so, oftentimes, members of the public may submit a plan that just says, hey, I want District 1 to look like this. I want, you know, these neighborhoods included. But the criteria we'll adopt will make it clear that if they are, if anyone from the public wishes to present a proposed plan, it needs to present the whole city and the effects that that'll have on the whole city. So, step two, after the initial assessment, we will present these two resolutions for your consideration and adoption, hopefully. Step three, this evening, I have back at our office, we have a team of, they call them GIS, which is Graphical Information Systems, but we have a team of computer analysts who work with us, work with the attorneys and the councils, and we can actually put up on your monitors the current City Council maps, and we can pick and choose which census blocks we might move from one district to another in order to rectify any imbalance in the size of the districts. And we can create new plans if we find one that we like, that we can go forward and evaluate, and we'll generate automatically the data on the size of those new districts and what effect they may have on the racial and ethnic composition of those districts. Because as we'll talk about in our assessment, that is very important. The Constitution and the Voting Rights Act has a lot to say about what we can and can't do when we go through redistricting. And then finally, I'll talk a bit about the roadmap and the timing. There's kind of two things that drive the timing of a city to adopt its new redistricting plan. One, there's a state law in the election code that says that a city has to adopt its districts that plans to use for an election three months before that election. And I believe the City of Duncanville has elections in May of 2022, so you back up three months before that under state law. But to go a step further, you want to have your district plan in place before the first candidate filing day for City Council elections. And so, really, the last possible date that we want to adopt a redistricting plan would be about January 19th. But as I'll talk about in our assessment, I don't expect that your plans and your process will be too complicated. The imbalance in the size of the districts in Duncanville is rather small, and so, as we go through the math, I think we'll be able to adopt something much sooner than that if the Council wishes. And also, to be clear, I was an English major, and so, math is, math does not come naturally to me. But good news, we've got it worked out. I will make the math as simple as possible. It will be very, very painless, or at least somewhat painless. So, let's go into the initial assessment, if you don't mind. This kind of is what I just described. This is the pathway to adopting a new redistricting plan. We're doing the initial assessment. Step two, we're going to adopt the plan criteria and guidelines. We'll discuss what illustrative plans means. I've brought two with me tonight that are up on this wall, but later in the presentation, I'll put them up on your screens as well. An illustrative plan is basically just, here's an option. It's not the only option. In fact, there are infinite options out there. But these options are maybe the ones that will meet the criteria in a simple and effective manner. So, the illustrative plans, we already have two that I'll present to you, but it's no problem at all for us to develop other ones if the Council wishes. There will be a public comment and public hearing on the redistricting proposals and options, and a thorough discussion for any members of the public that want to engage. And I believe that's going to take place on December 7th. Also, at that meeting, the Council will get to analyze these comments from the public as part of that engagement process, and then ultimately, we'll adopt a final plan. So, there are three and a half principles that I'm going to be talking about during the presentation today. It's really, it used to be four, but as I'll discuss, the Supreme Court has ruled a couple years ago in a way that did away with Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act. So, the first thing we're going to talk about, and again, I'll drill down into more detail in the next few slides, but there's something that we call the one-person, one-vote, equal population principle, and that comes from the 14th Amendment to the Constitution. And really, the idea of it is that all of our votes should be equal in strength. And so, if I live in a district that only has 100 people in it, and you live in a district that has 1,000 people in it, my vote is more powerful than yours, because your vote is more diluted by the 1,000 people. I live in the small district, so my vote, you know, carries more strength. And so, the 14th Amendment really does teach us, and the case law that's come out of it teaches us, that we want to strive towards making our districts within a governmental entity roughly equal in population. Now, it's impossible to go down to like, you know, equal, precisely equal. You know, it's never possible to make every district exactly 5,000 people. So, we'll talk a bit about what the case law says we need to try to do in terms of how close in equal population the districts we want it to be. We're going to talk about the Voting Rights Act. So, Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act is still law. The Voting Rights Act is still the law in the United States. It's the federal statute that says that we cannot have discrimination in our adoption of districts. And so, I'll talk about what we can and can't do when we're adopting districts. And as we discuss Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act, which has been overruled by the United States Supreme Court, we're going to talk about what retroaggression means. And so, while voting, Section 5 is no longer applicable, there's still some principles from Section 5, and there's a word called retroaggression that I'm going to talk about. And the basic idea is that if you have a district that is performing in a way that allows a racial minority group to elect a candidate of their choice, then you want to avoid adopting a plan that diminishes or draws down the ability of that group to elect a candidate of their choice. That's what retroaggression means. And then, we're going to talk about a case called Shaw versus Reno, which is another Supreme Court case that teaches us how you are and are not able to use race when you're adopting districts. Because obviously, you know, the Voting Rights Act teaches us that we do need to consider the ability of minority groups to elect candidates of their choice, but there are ways that it can be done that violate the Voting Rights Act. Yes, Mayor?
Pardon me, could you give that explanation of retroaggression again, please?
Yeah, sure. Imagine a district that is 60% Hispanic by voting age population, and a city adopts a plan that reduces that from 60% down to 40% Hispanic by voting age population. That might be considered to be retroaggression, because it takes a district that had a majority group, a minority group that was in mathematical majority, and gets rid of it. It's no longer a majority. And so, someone could file a lawsuit against that city and say, you just violated Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, because previously, this district was able to elect a candidate of that ethnic group's choice. But now that it's 40% instead of 60%, maybe that is not true anymore. And so, that's just something you want to be aware of. Now, like I said before, you can't change any district without slightly tweaking numbers. So, a district could go from 42% Asian to 41% Asian. That's not retroaggression. Retroaggression is when you make a change and someone can prove that, or allege and credibly prove that it was intentionally done in order to take away the ability of that minority group to elect a candidate of their choice.
Correct. Thank you very much.
So, we don't need to worry about going like a couple percentages up and down, but it's when it really takes away the ability to have a majority that was previously there. That's retroaggression.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And I should say, please do interrupt me. I have a tendency, just get going and keep talking. So, if anyone has questions during my presentation, please do, just go ahead and raise your hand. I'll get, I'll answer anything you might want to know. So, going back to the first square on that four-step, you know, the four principles we need to think about. The first principle is the one-person, one-vote principle, and that's what comes from the 14th Amendment to the United States Constitution, and it's an approximately equal population requirement. So, again, it's not exact equal, but in general, you want to have an approximately equal population. So, in Duncanville, we have five single-member districts, and I'll have a chart on the next page that shows you how this math works, an example, but in general, you're going to want, you know, you're going to want each of those districts to be close to the ideal population of the district, which is just an average divided by five. The rule of thumb that we get from our cases is a total deviation of 10%, and this will make much more sense on the next slide, which I'm just going to go to right now. But the difference, it's basically a question of the deviation from your ideal district size. You don't want your largest district to be more than 10% bigger than your smallest district when measured from your average midpoint. So, again, math, not my thing, but this chart, let's walk through it, because it'll help explain. And it's interesting, because, you know, Duncanville has almost exactly 40,000 people according to the 2021 census. So, in this example, you have a city that has 40,000 people and has four single-member districts, A, B, C, and D. So, the second column says ideal district, and what you do is you take 40,000 people, you divide by your four districts, and you get your ideal district size of 10,000 people per district. So, let's say, in this make-believe city, and the most recent census just came out, and you see the city's changed in size, and you know, cities don't change, you know, across the board. Some, maybe an apartment complex got built in one neighborhood, maybe, you know, new housing development went in in another neighborhood. So, some districts grow faster than others. Some might even lose population for any number of reasons. So, in this city, you have District A that has 11,000 people. And so, what you do is you measure the difference between District A's actual population and its ideal average district size of 10,000. You see that District A is now 1,000 people bigger than ideal, and that's, that means it's 10% bigger than the ideal size. But then, if you go down to District D, for whatever reason, District D only has 8,000 people, and that means it's 2,000 people smaller than your ideal district size of 10,000. That means District D is 20% smaller than the ideal district size. And what you do for one-person, one-vote 14th Amendment purposes is you measure the total deviation between your largest district, District A, and your smallest district, which is District D, and you'll find that's a 30% deviation. And as we said before, the case law has taught us that really, 10%, anything above 10% is, could be considered a violation of the one-person, one-vote principle from the 14th Amendment. So, in this, this city would have to fix these districts, and you want it to be such that your largest district is no more than 10% larger than your smallest district as measured as deviation from your ideal district size. So, we'll get to Duncanville's chart later in the presentation. The good news is, you do not have anything close to this kind of problem. You have about a 12.5% deviation between your largest district and your smallest district. So, that's only 2.5% larger than law allows, which means that it's a fairly easy problem to solve. If you have two districts and one is, you know, 10% higher than the ideal size and one is 2% lower, you can take a small amount of population from the large district and give it to that small district and come below 10%. Yes, Mayor?
Sorry for a math question.
Yeah.
But the 30 comes from 10 plus 20 being absolutes.
That's right.
Not using the negative or the positive, because we have plus 10 and minus 20.
Exactly.
That would take it to a minus 10, pure math.
We're doing by, by...
But pure absolutes take it to a 30.
Correct.
Okay.
So, exactly. So, the total difference between the largest and the smallest cannot exceed 10%.
Got it.
So, conceivably, you could have one district that's 30% above the ideal size, and then every other district be exactly zero, and that 30% would still be too much. But in absolute terms, it cannot exceed 10%. Yes?
I'm still going to hurt my hands around. So, when we did this 10 years ago, did it like... When we did this 10 years ago, was it, it was, of course, not balanced out then? Did the law change it to make it this way now, or was it, did we just, because it was so close, we were able to do it like 10 years ago?
I didn't, was not involved 10 years ago, but I don't, did you, did the city have to adopt new districts 10 years ago? It may be that you're, for many cities that approach us as a firm, we look at their numbers and we say, okay, you only have an 8% deviation. You don't have to redistrict at all. You could choose to if you wish, but if a city is below that 10% threshold, the city is not obligated to redraw its district boundaries.
Okay.
So, it's only if a city, or county, or school district, or any other kind of entity with single-member districts, it's only if that city is, has a deviation of more than 10% between its largest and smallest district that it has to redraw its boundaries. So, it's possible that Duncanville didn't have such a problem in 2011, and it's possible it won't have that problem in 2031, but it's just, it's impossible to really, you know, use the crystal ball and see where it'll be in 10 years.
All right, thank you.
No problem. So, can we move on from this, or does this concept make sense? And again, I'll have a chart later in my presentation that shows Duncanville's data and shows you exactly which districts are above and below the ideal district size and by how much. So, we'll discuss that. So, the next square that, of the principles that we need to consider when going through redistricting is Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. This is the section that says that you cannot discriminate based on race, or language, or minority status. So, what you want to avoid is preventing any ethnic minority group from being able to elect a candidate of their choice. And so, in general, you know, if a city has or can create a majority-minority district without removing the ability of that group to elect people in more than one district, then, you know, you could say that city has an obligation to create a district that can elect a person of that ethnic group. But there's kind of two concepts that you can't do, and this is where it gets very complicated and a little bit subjective. There are two concepts in redistricting that are forbidden and often lead to litigation under Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, and they have clever nicknames. They're called cracking and packing. So, cracking is when you take a cohesive minority group that elects a person of their choice consistently, and you divide them, yeah, got the mic there, you divide them into two districts so that that group can no longer have the ability to elect a candidate of their choice. So, imagine, if you will, that the city, A city, had a district that was 80% African-American, and in redistricting, you adopted, you divided that in half so that there were two districts that were 40%, and that therefore, a majority group had 60% and could consistently elect a person of their choice over that minority group. That is a good example of what fracturing or cracking would be, and that's a good example of someone that is going to have a problem in federal court if they get sued under the Voting Rights Act. So, you know, cracking, as the slide says, is dividing minority voters to fragment their voting power. And it's that example. Imagine a district that's 60% Hispanic, and you divide it in half into 30 and 30, two new districts. That's, that could be a big problem. But then, conversely, there's the opposite problem, which is packing. So, imagine you have two districts today, like one is maybe 45% African-American, the other is 45% African-American, and you combine those districts into one. So, instead of having two districts that consistently are able to elect a candidate of that group's choice, now you only have one, because you created one district that is now like 90% African-American. Previously, there were two districts that were, where people were able to vote and elect a person of their choice. So, that's what packing is, and that's also prohibited. So, you can probably see, like, there's a fine line, and sometimes, it's somewhat subjective in terms of what you can and can't do, and how you can and can't consider race when adopting districts. But we're going to walk through these concepts to make it clear that we don't, we're not, we're going to avoid these pitfalls. The goal is always to adopt districts that will not be challenged in court, and if they were challenged in court, you know, the city would prevail on. But I don't expect, from looking at the data for Duncanville, that we will have such a problem. Next, I want to talk a little bit about the 14th Amendment and a case called Shaw versus Reno. So, this also touches on the Voting Rights Act, but it's mostly a 14th Amendment case. And this is where we, we're going to talk a little bit more about how race-based criteria can and can't be used in adopting districts and redistricting. And so, the question the courts, the federal courts are going to ask is, was race the predominant consideration in drawing a redistricting plan? And it can be so. It is not, per se, prohibited to do that, because the Voting Rights Act does, you know, teach us that sometimes you do need to create districts that allow minority groups to elect a person, a candidate of their choice. But here's, here's the last line right there, is kind of the key to the case law on this, and that is that if race is the predominant consideration in drawing the districts, it has, this is what's called strict scrutiny in Supreme Court law. It has been narrowly tailored, which means it has to be, race has to be used in a most narrow fashion in order to meet and address a compelling governmental interest. And so, what is a compelling governmental interest? Well, you know, the Voting Rights Act provides that allowing minority groups who can form a majority district to elect a candidate of their choice. That's a compelling governmental interest to create that, such a district. So, you can't do packing and cracking. You can't combine everyone into one district. You can't divide people from one district into two to try to prevent people from being able to elect a candidate of their ethnic choice. So, it's going to be, if reviewed in courts, it really does come down to kind of a rightness and wrongness sense that the judge will consider, and judges will also look at other criteria and other factors. Did that city adopt redistricting criteria that were consistent and that met, you know, all the different guidelines that the city had adopted? Did the city change, radically change its boundaries from before in a way that really does change the ethnic makeup of those districts? Look at the, even, and I'll show you the next few slides, but, you know, are those boundaries, like weird boundaries that look like a shotgun blast, and they're clearly just doing it to try to pack in a minority group into a single district so that they're not having a high number in other districts? And again, I'll show you some really great examples in just a second. After this presentation, we're going to adopt redistricting criteria, but you can see, this is kind of a rough chart of the things that we're going to try to go for, and it's impossible. These are all kind of balancing factors. It's impossible to do everything, but when you adopt criteria that guide you through, you know, what you want to do in redistricting, these are kind of like your aspirational goals. You want boundaries in your districts that are, use identifiable traits. So, it shouldn't just be a jigsaw line. You want to use things like roads, or creeks, railroad tracks, rivers, lakes, school boundaries. So, example, like an area all feeds into one elementary school, an area that is considered a neighborhood in general, like, you want identifiable boundaries like that as the basis for drawing your districts. You want to maintain communities of interest and neighborhoods. And communities of interest, it's a similar concept, but let's say, you know, one neighborhood all uses a certain park. You want to adopt criteria that recognize those communities, or maybe, you know, there's a language that is spoken predominantly in a certain area, or, you know, a certain area feeds into one middle school, or one elementary school. So, these are kind of, you want to maintain those communities of interest. It doesn't have to be ethnic. It can also be things like language, culture, arts, schools. In general, you want to use voting precincts when possible, so you don't really want to divide voting precincts whenever you can't. You can avoid it, but sometimes it's not possible to avoid it. You want to base your plan on existing districts, so we never recommend starting from a blank sheet. You want to start from the districts you have, which, I brought some charts, but on the left there is the districts you have today up on the wall, and we can, we can look at that later. So, start with the districts you have, and then look at the 2021 census data, and we can, we can tinker from there. You want to adopt districts of relatively equal size, which we talked about. You want districts that are compact and contiguous. So, you don't really want districts that have like the shotgun blast look, where there's just pieces of district connected by, you know, really narrow roads that go out all over the place. In general, you want to keep incumbents in their district, because people have voted for those incumbents, those council members and their mayor. So, whenever possible, you don't want to draw districts that take a person out of their district. That's one of the criteria that is in the resolution we may adopt tonight. And then, you want to narrowly tailor your plan to comply with the Voting Rights Act, and that's where we were talking about narrowly using the use of race to develop your district boundaries. So, now, we're going to get into the benchmark of 20, I think, I may have missed a few slides, though. Huh. Somehow, okay. Well, the presentation I had before did have some examples. You can kind of see it here, but there's some examples of cases from the last 20 years where you can see, it just looks like there's colors everywhere. There's just, you know, this is an example of a district that did not comply with the Voting Rights Act. It did not comply with the redistricting criteria. So, you don't want to adopt districts that look like it's just scattered all over the place. You want it to be compact and contiguous. That's generally the goal. So, we're going to look at now specifically Duncanville's data. We're going to look specifically at what your current City Council districts are for your single-member districts, and we're going to look at the data on... And we're going to look at the data on-- You start with these districts and you overlay the 2021 census data, and that'll tell us where you are now. And it'll also really tell us where we need to go to adopt a new districting plan. So you can see, you know, you've got your five districts, your five single-member districts. So the red outline, you know, is your current district boundaries. So this is that chart. This is where the math comes in. You've got District 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And based on your total population, which is by the census data that just came out, 40,745 people. So you divide that by 5 and you get an ideal district size of 8,149. So if a district is above that amount or below that amount, we only want the total deviation from that ideal size between your largest district and your smallest district to be 10% or lower. You can see-- And this will show that, you know, how the problem can be solved. And I do think it's-- There's a fairly straightforward way to do it. You have District 2, which is 5.45% larger than your ideal district size. And then you have District 3, which is 7.24% smaller than your ideal district size. So if you add those together in absolute terms, the 5.45 plus 7.24, you get an overall deviation of 12.69%. So it's 2.69% too large of a deviation. But you can see, since District 2 and District 3 are next to each other, it is entirely possible and entirely a simple solution to add a small number of people from District 2 into District 3. And you can bring that number below 10% fairly readily. I have a few more slides that are going to talk about-- That will show you the ethnic composition as well of the districts currently. So you can see it's usually broken out by first the Hispanic ethnicity and then by non-Hispanic ethnicity. And so you can see for each of the districts, by total population, which is what we use for the 14th Amendment, one person, one vote. But by total population, you can see, you know, that you have-- District 3 and District 5 are majority Hispanic by total population. And you can see that, you know, District 4 and District 1 have not a majority, but a large percentage of non-Hispanic black population in those districts. And Duncanville, you know, you have a lot of diversity in all of your districts. And so I don't believe there really will be a problem unless you did something radical that would lead to that retroaggression problem. So I don't believe you have a problem-- That there will be a solution necessary that would run afoul of the problems of, you know, taking a district that has a majority population and reducing it so that it will not. So next, I'll show you a few maps that we also have at our disposal that show us really like the percentages of minority populations by census block. And one of the things about redistricting is you want to start with a census block. You don't really want to divide them up. A census block really is-- It's essentially a street or a small geographic area that the census uses for its counting purposes. So each one of these little-- They're not necessarily squares, so they don't have to be a block. They can be rectangles. They can be kind of goofy shaped. But they're trying to capture like a neighborhood or a piece of a neighborhood when they create the census blocks. So the first map shows you where the highest concentration of Hispanic population is in your city today. And we can go back to any of these maps, too, by the way. The second map shows you where the largest percentage of black population is in your city today. And again, the black outlines show you where the current council districts are. And then we're going to talk a bit about plan development. And these are the steps that we kind of went through. We're doing the initial assessment. We're going to adopt the criteria and the guidelines. We're going to develop illustrative plans. And then, like I said, we can do a December 7 public hearing where people can come in and present their ideas and their guidelines and their plans. And the end goal-- I mean, you could adopt a redistricting plan on December 7 if we feel like we are there. You could adopt it at your next meeting, which I believe is December 21 as well. So this is a rough timeline. It's not-- I have a few updates to discuss on this. I mean, we have a drawing session that we can do this evening as part of our initial assessment. So I have a-- Our GIS person back in our office who we can walk through and put up on the screen and show you-- You know, like if you guys want to say, "Take this area from District 2 and put it in District 3," we can show you in real time what that difference might make, both in terms of the size of the districts and in terms of the ethnic composition of those districts. And so if you like those districts that we come up with, we can save them and they can become illustrative plans. I believe we are going to have a public hearing on December 7, and that's an opportunity to discuss both any plans we develop this evening or the two plans that I brought with me this evening to share with you. And we could, you know, set up for possible adoption on December 7 as well if the council wishes. But if not, you have until roughly January 19. That's really the last possible date to adopt new districting plans. I would recommend doing it sooner than that, especially, you know, if you can do so and if the problem is not as pronounced as some other places, you know, going through it faster is definitely possible. Yes, Mayor?
This-- Maybe this is a legal question for-- Well, for both of you. You mentioned earlier on that if a citizen comes forward with a plan, it has to be a plan for the entire city. They just can't say, "I want to move from here to here to here to there." So during the public hearing, if a citizen comes forward with that unauthorized plan, you know, just one or two districts, what do we as a council do? Do I declare that person-- That plan to be disqualified? Or what do I do? What do we as a council do if a citizen does something not in accordance with what the law says?
Well, first of all, we would ask them if they use the criteria that you're about to adopt tonight to do the plan.
Okay.
And if it's a plan for only one district, as Josh has told you, you can consider that. It has to be for the whole city. But a citizen could comment that they want the line moved from A to B. That's their comment. You take that comment. Josh will guide you through that process, whether that accomplishes your goal. And if you're happy with it, you could consider it, just like any plan that a member of the council might suggest.
So we accept the comment, but we can't consider the plan?
That's right. And you can take that comment and take it, you know, for whatever weight you wish to give to it. You can discuss it. You can consider it. But you don't have to accept a plan that doesn't meet your redistricting criteria.
Thank you.
So I think it's great to discuss it because, yeah, the members of the public can come and say, "Well, I don't like, you know, District 4. I don't like the way it looks right now, and here's why." And even if they don't have a plan that meets our criteria, it's still part of the public hearing process to at least like hear them out, consider it, discuss it. But it's not-- You know, if-- And I really don't expect this to be the case, but if your plan that you adopt was ever challenged in court, it could not be said that someone from the public brought you a perfectly valid plan that would have solved a Section 2 Voting Rights Act problem, but you just ignored it. The city chose to throw it in the trash. If it was never a plan that met the criteria adopted by the council, it is not a plan that, you know, someone could point to and say, "This city ignored it. The city had a plan that would have fixed the problem and didn't."
I was just thinking, out of courtesy to the comp-- To the citizen, I wouldn't want to just out of hand dismiss them.
Sure, and you don't need to.
That's why I wanted to know--
Yeah.
You know, how we would handle something like that.
I would just note that it doesn't meet the redistricting criteria adopted by the council--
Thank you for your input.
--and that it doesn't show how-- A complete plan for the whole city. But let's consider your idea. Let's see, you know, what we think about it and how it would impact-- And we can, in real time, show you what it would do to the other districts. It's just that it is not considered a plan that meets the criteria and therefore, it's not essentially a plan.
Thank you.
So that is the initial assessment. You know, that really is kind of what we first do when we start talking about redistricting. We want to diagnose the problem to the extent that there is a problem, and we want to go through these principles of, you know, the Constitution and the Voting Rights Act. And so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about that. And we can do so throughout the evening and you can-- I'll give you my card. You can email me with questions throughout the next few weeks. You can call me, and that's what we're here for. But I think the next thing that it might make sense to do is to consider the two resolutions that you probably have in your agenda packets and adopt them, you know, if you wish to. One of these is going to be called Resolution: Adopting Criteria for Use in 2021 Redistricting Process. And I don't have the resolution numbers, but I imagine your city secretary does. And the second one is called Guidelines for Persons Submitting Specific Redistricting Proposals and Providing Comments. Yes, sir?
Before we move on to that, I just had one question about-- So, you know, forthcoming elections. So if a person lives in a district that-- Say they've got an election coming up in May, but the redistricting causes them to go to a district where they won't be able to vote in that election. Is there any-- Are there any considerations we have to make there?
Well, okay. So one of the redistricting criteria is going to be taking into consideration where an incumbent lives and, when possible, avoiding drawing that incumbent into a district that they don't live in. So it's something that I'm going to advise the city not to do. I would not advise-- If it can be avoided, I would not advise drawing a district that takes someone out of the district where they're currently sitting.
Yeah. No, I'm not talking about--
Oh, you mean for voting?
Yeah, for voting. Yeah, not for--
There will be some people that will, in the May 2021 election, be voting in a new district, yes.
So they'll miss an election, I guess is what I'm asking.
Well, they won't-- They won't miss an election. They'll just be voting in their new district in May of 2021. So--
But they won't be able to vote for-- So for example, so District 3 and District 2, there's going to be some change going on there. So people who would be voting in District 2 election for a councilman in May won't be able to vote in this election because they have to wait until the District 3 election comes up.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. If that-- That's a good question. If they are now in a district-- Like, let's say District 3 doesn't come up until November-- Those people that move into District 3 will have to wait until November to vote in District 3.
Thank--
Yeah, you're welcome. That's a good question. So, you know, Mayor, if you want to call the-- These two resolutions and discuss and take possible action, I think your agenda is set up for that.
Well, I have the two resolutions. I have them in hard copy. I didn't see them in a packet. Were they in a packet?
I emailed it to council last week, but I have Candace bringing the paper copies right now if y'all would like to see those.
Okay. Yeah. So, Council, what we would be doing-- If you take a look at the agenda, what we'd be undertaking at this moment would be Item 2B on the agenda, which would be Consider Resolution Establishing Guidelines for Persons Submitting Specific Redistricting Proposals and Providing Comments for Use of 2021 Redistricting Process for Places 1 through 5 of the City Council's Single-member Districts, Providing for Review, Providing for Submission of Citizen Plans, and Providing for an Effective Date. So examining-- Let me ask this question first. Does everybody have the resolutions? Yeah. It's-- You know, it's-- From looking it over, basically what it is, it's a reiteration of what you've just shown us on that particular slide in terms of what has to be accomplished in the guidelines.
Yes. And so there are-- So for the guidelines for the council, there are nine criteria. And they are the things that we discussed during the assessment just now. And things like having compact districts, maintaining communities of interest, avoiding-- Removing an incumbent from their district, things like that. Using narrowly tailored racial considerations to comply with federal law, things like that. And just to emphasize a point that Mr. Garcia just whispered in my ear, I think it's a good idea to adopt these before we go into drawing any new maps or considering options for redrawing the maps, just so that we have the criteria in place and we can point to it and say, you know, "The city was guided by these redistricting criteria." Yes? Absolutely.
Yeah. Mayor, since-- Not to contradict Josh, but I think under 2C, once you adopt 2B, you have to adopt 2C knowing that you're going to adopt that criteria because we don't have anything else on the agenda. So I want to stay-- Make sure that we're legal and we're not doing something outside posted agenda item. So when we get to-- Go ahead and vote on 2B. And then when you get to 2C, let's talk about drawing the maps and then adopt the criteria. But we'll-- I would assume Josh is going to keep us on the legal side on the criteria as you look at these two maps.
All right. Let me understand-- I want to make sure I understand what you just said. We would adopt Resolution 088, which are the criteria under 2B. We would then consider item-- The Resolution 089 under 2C. Have Josh show us the maps, and then after we see the maps, we vote on adopting 089.
And when you're looking at those maps, you're going to be using the criteria that you will adopt in the resolution.
Got it.
But we don't have anything else on the agenda, and therefore, I don't know that we can do anything--
Right.
--as a convened body, so--
Okay. Thank you for that. One question, Mr. Katz. The-- I'm looking at the-- At both of the resolutions. Neither resolution is particularly specific to the city of Duncanville. So what I'm assuming-- And I guess this is what I'm asking to affirm my assumption, which is a-- Hate to do that, but this is what I got to do. Just me. That what we are looking at in these two resolutions have been found to be constitutionally legal.
That's correct.
And constitutionally and legally sufficient as a template that is being used throughout many, 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 many places throughout the United States.
That's correct, especially in Texas. So my firm has litigated Voting Rights Act cases for 40 years. And I've actually tried a couple with my partner, Bob Heath, who founded our firm in 1980. And so what you see in these criteria, they are not specific to Duncanville. You're correct.
Right.
You can apply them in ways that are specific to Duncanville, and that's what they're designed to do. So a community of interest in Duncanville may be very different than a community of interest in Arlington or any other place. But because of the cases that have come out from the Fifth Circuit, which is the federal circuit that we're part of, and the Supreme Court, which of course we're part of, these are the criteria that you can deduce from those opinions of the courts. So this would apply whether you're a county in the Rio Grande Valley or-- Well, there are different criteria for counties. But if you're a city in the Rio Grande Valley or you're a city outside of Beaumont or you're a city in the Metroplex, these are the battle-tested, you know, criteria that the courts have said, "Use these criteria." And so you can apply them in ways that are local. In fact, we should. But the criteria themselves are what we-- You know, everyone that-- Who is a city needs to be looking at.
Well, I wanted to make sure that we, as a council, would be confident that what we're looking at are legally sufficient.
That's specifically why-- Why we're advising our clients to adopt them, yes. Absolutely, Mayor.
And they're reasonably simple in language as well.
That's what we're going for.
Which I appreciate.
Well, we want-- Lawyers have a-- The best thing to do is lawyers make things simple. Take something complicated, make it simple. It's also the hardest thing to do. But we want criteria that a member of the public can look at and say, "That's what my city is doing. That's what they're considering when they're drawing these districts. I understand that I may not get what I want, but here's why." You know, here's what the city was looking at and the council was looking at when they drew what they drew.
Okay. So, city--
I'll do a question for you. So you mentioned that there is no district-- Perhaps let's talk about 2 and 3 for a second-- That crossed over precincts. So you're saying the precincts align with each district at this point?
I don't think they perfectly align. What I would say is that it is a criteria that you want to balance against the other criteria. So when possible, you want to keep precincts together. Just-- It makes sense because you get more confusion when you start, you know, tinkering with those things.
So do we know right now if there's, let's say, two and three, since we use, use it as an example, would that precinct, would this comes into play for those two precincts? Those two districts?
I don't have that with me, but it is something that I can produce. We, we have the capability, in fact, if we do bring our drawing expert in this evening, I think we would be able to put that up on the screen and look at that.
That's probably a better question when we get, when we get to 2C, because that's when we're gonna actually see-
Well, I mean, but it's, but it's in the adoption of, of the-
Of the criteria.
The criteria, yes.
That's right.
That's why I'm asking it now.
It's aspirational. When possible, you want to keep precincts together, yes, but it may not, you know, it, it's not the only thing to consider. So if, if you have an option that might meet five other criteria but not that one, you can adopt that, is not necessary, there's, there's no plan that can meet all nine criteria. There's always gonna be one that, you know, like, okay, this neighborhood is now divided slightly, but it meets the other seven criteria, it meets eight of the criteria.
But in my, from my information, it still would be good for, not only, good information for us to know.
I think so, and I, I should be able to produce that.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we have that.
Any other comments from Mr. Katz before we, before I call for a motion on the criteria? Or do you need a couple more minutes to look them over, council?
Give it a couple, I read it before, I want to read it again, now, after hearing the presentation.
Take your time, take your time, it's important.
I'm not sure if I have. I think they're on the slide. Can you have? Let's see. Yeah, I can go back to that. There's at least seven, it's most-
Thank you, Mayor, I'm completed.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, the chair will accept a motion to approve Item 2B on the agenda, which is Resolution Number 2021-088.
So moved.
So moved, so moved, yes?
That's not correct. Eight, nine is for Guidelines for Persons Submitting Specific Redistricting, which is 2B. Eighty-eight is actually 2C.
Okay.
So if you would go ahead and adopt the guidelines for the persons submitting-
I see.
-plans, and then we adopt that, then we can get into map drawing, and then you adopt 2C, which is eighty-eight. So you want to do eighty-nine first, eighty-eight second.
I was taking them numerically.
You were, I-
Yeah, okay. So let me back up, folks. Please take a look at zero, eight, and nine.
redistrict the entire city and all five single-membered districts. So I see that statement, but that's not necessarily what we've seen in the proposed redistricting maps.
Do you mean in that it, it doesn't change all five of them?
Right.
It's not required for the city to change all five, and it wouldn't be required for a, a citizen proposing a, a plan to change all five. They would just have to show what effect, if any, their proposed change would have on each of the five districts. The answer may be none. If they, for example, do an example plan that just changes Districts Two and Three, they could just demonstrate that it makes no impact on Districts One, Four, and Five.
So is what I'm missing there, that it says plans should and not plans shall?
Plans should redistrict the entire city? I mean, what it means is that it at least has to demonstrate what effect, if any, their plan might have on each district in the city. But it is entirely possible, in fact, I think it's, in Duncanville's case, very likely that anyone's proposed map will only affect at most, you know, three districts, but more likely two, and have no changes to the boundaries of the other three districts. And that's totally okay, it's just that any plan that the city is going to consider has to demonstrate what effect, if any, it has on the other districts in the city.
All right, seeing no further comments, the chair will accept a motion to approve Item 2B.
Mayor, I'd like to make that motion to accept 2B, Resolution Number 2021-089.
Zero eighty-nine. Called by Mr. McNerney, seconded by Mr. Cooks. Council, please vote. Thank you, it's approved unanimously with Mr. Harvey absent. Moving on to Item 2C, and I'm gonna make a note for myself that this is 2021-
Yeah, that, now's the time, we're gonna draw maps.
Now we're gonna draw maps.
Now we're gonna draw maps, we're gonna, you've all read eighty-eight, so you know what, at large, the criteria is. So I think what Josh needs to do now is present you the maps under that criteria.
But according to what you have taught us in terms of going through the agenda, it would be necessary for me to say we're now moving on to Item 2C on the agenda.
Oh, absolutely, I just didn't want you to take a vote, and then we didn't have anything to do.
That's what I was gonna do. We're now moving on to Item 2C. Consider Resolution Establishing Criteria for the Use of 2021 Redistricting Process for Places 1 through 5 of the City Council Single Member Districts, Providing for Review, Providing for Submission of Citizen Plans, Providing for an Effective Date. Mr. Katz, turning it over to you, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I will begin the process, but I'll, I'll just point out that my computer expert, who's a very nice gentleman named Cameron, will be sharing his screen soon. I just sent him a message letting him know that we're ready to start the drawing session. But what I can do before then, so what I, we can, if we want, take a moment to look at this on the wall, but I'm gonna put it up on the screen. What I did last week is I sat down with our, our computer person, and I developed what, what I would call two example maps, or illustrative maps. And these two maps, they're, they're not what you have to adopt, they are options that you could adopt if you think that they're, they're sufficient. But with these two maps, I, I took a stab at trying to fix that, that problem, that 12.69% discrepancy between your smallest district. And I, I applied the criteria that presumably, presumably we'll be adopting tonight, to try to keep communities of interest together, to try to develop compact contiguous boundaries. Map A is going to be an example of essentially like the smallest change that Duncanville could adopt that would fix that problem. And it's a, it's a very small change, and I'll show you. Map B is another example map, but in this one, there, there are a couple of extra changes that were, that are proposed, and it's not necessary to do these additional changes, but it, it brings all the districts even closer into proximity to the ideal size of the district. But just to be clear, first of all, these are just two, two ideas that, that we were just spitballing with. We can do drawing tonight with the district, I can do drawing over the next weeks based on ideas from the council, and come up with completely different maps than what I'm gonna show you. But just to be clear, these, these are two examples that we could go with, or, or give you ideas of what we could go with. And Map A is going to be really the simplest, and I, I do often advise, we do often advise, that making the simplest change necessary to fix your problem is a good idea, because it, it meets some of the important criteria, which is keeping your existing districts, keeping your incumbents in their places. A very simple change will have very minimal impacts on minority populations within those districts. It allows the majority of the voters in your city to stay in their existing districts, and therefore they have the, you know, the safety, confidence to know that they're, they're still represented by the person that they elected, or the person that they have known to go to for the last X number of years. So Option A, you know, I, I do usually advise to, to keep things simple when possible. So I think Cameron is now in control of our screen, and the magic of technology is about to, to take place. So I don't know, can, Cameron, can you hear us, and can we communicate with you right now?
Yes, I can hear you, are you able to hear me?
There you go, yes.
Awesome.
Thanks for joining us, Cameron, I, I have introduced you as our, our computer expert. And you'll see up on the screen, Cameron, is this correct, that this, this is illustrative Plan A, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so this is the first example map that, that we put together. It's, it's the middle map on the wall, if later on you want to go over and look at it. We have these cool printers in our office that we really only get to use every decade, so I like to bring these big maps with me when I can, and, and they're yours to keep, but they'll, you can look on that map and see, street by street, you know, who, what is in a district, and what might change from District Two to District Three. So I'll just direct your attention to kind of the southeast corner of District Two, which is your green district. So like I said before, this is the very minimal change, this is the smallest change that you, you could make and adopt, that would bring you into compliance with the one-person, one-vote principle of the Fourteenth Amendment. You can see there's this orange, you see, the red outline is the current district as, as it exists, but this area that is now shaded yellow, that would be an area that would be moving from District Two to District Three. And Cameron, I think you can tell us what the population of that census block is, and I'll, we'll show you how small it changes.
That's correct, yeah, these, uh, let's see, these two districts combined would be one, one block of 145 people and one block of 213 people. So, yeah, 213 people total, which is moving from District Two into District Three of this plan.
I didn't understand a word he said.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
It's, it's the sound quality coming across.
I think I can hear him better here perhaps than, than y'all can, unfortunately. To re, just, I'll tell you what I, what I heard, and he can correct me if you, if I'm wrong, but essentially this yellow area is two census blocks. One of them has about 40 people, and one of them has like close to 200 people. So in total, this is, you know, about 230 people or 240 people, is that right, Cameron?
Yes, 213.
213.
Yes, and it says right up here at the top left.
Okay, there, in top-left corner, population 213. So this is 213 people that if this plan were adopted, those 213 people would go from District Two to District Three. And Cameron, if you can maybe page down, at the bottom, you'll see the, the total population tabulation at the bottom of the screen. Let's, let's look at what that means for our one-person, one-vote issue, and what that, what, what that change means for the balance of the population, the total population in the districts. So if this change were adopted, you now see that District Two is now only 2.83% above the ideal size, and District Three is only 4.63% below the ideal population size. And remember, those will be the only two districts that would change with this plan. And so you add those two together, 4.63 plus two point, plus, sorry, 2.83 plus 4.63. Actually, no, it would be 4.43 plus 4.63, because you, you need to add together your largest district by deviation and your smallest district. So under this plan, District Four would now be your largest district, and District Three would still be your smallest. And so if you add 4.43% plus 4.63%, you get almost exactly 9%. It's nine, up in the top-right corner, you see 9.06%. So that is below the magic 10% threshold, so there's no longer a problem from a Fourteenth Amendment standpoint, there's no longer a one-person, one-vote problem. Yes, sir?
Is there historical data on shifting of population within the districts? I'm just asking, if, you know, if we, say we adopted a slight change, like, criteria, so the deviation in District Three changed, maybe 2 or 3%, and changed District Two again, 2 or 3%? But is there any historical data that might show that, that, that could change again very soon, and we would be going through the whole process again, depending, say, four or five years?
That's a good question. So the soonest that you would have to adopt new districts would be 2031. So the next census won't come out until, you know, summer of 2031. And so once, you know, the districts we adopt today will be your districts, unless you decide to make a change, but it's, it would be very unorthodox to make a change before the next census comes out. So you won't have to be revisiting this at all for a decade, but in a decade, it's possible we'll be looking at this data, and hopefully I'll be here with you, just 10 years older, and I'll say, good news, your districts are still within 10% of each other, so you don't have to do any redistricting. But it's possible that some of your districts that have more empty land in them, some could grow faster than districts that don't. And so it's really hard to predict into the future what the size of these districts may be. So it, it, I, I don't usually advise that you make changes today in order to try to avoid having to do this again in 2031, because it's just really unpredictable, what it may be. But would you like to see, I think we might be able to do this, but are you interested in seeing what the population of these five districts was in 2011 census data?
Well, I, I would be, but yeah, I mean, you can't answer my question as far as what we have to do.
Not until 2031, you, you are under no obligation to do so until the next census, and there are examples of cities that do redistricting mid-cycle, like in 20, in five years from now, but I'll, I'll say it's risky, because that redist, that would be by choice, it wouldn't be because the city had to, it would be by choice. And that will tend to draw attention from a lot of folks and say, why are we redistricting? There's no new census data requiring us to do this, so are we redistricting for like the right reasons, you know, like the criteria that we've talked about, or are we redistricting to try to like get someone out of office? And depending on who that someone is, you know, you, you might really be opening yourself up to a lawsuit and a challenge that, that didn't comply with the criteria we talked about. So to answer your question, yeah, 2031 really would be the next time we, we would have to be looking at this.
Is there a footnote under this, I mean, I'm trying to distinguish voting age, but I see percentage.
Okay, so yes, there, there's, that, that's a good point, and I think I didn't really talk about that enough. So for the purpose, for the first question we're looking at, which is this one-person, one-vote constitutional question of making the districts roughly equivalent in population, you look at the total population, just the number of people, and you don't, it doesn't matter whether they're over 18, voting age, or under 18, it doesn't matter whether they're citizens or not citizens, you're just looking at the number of people in, bodies in that district. But we also do, so when you move, if, if you need to get into the Voting Rights Act question of whether your new districts, you maybe have retrogression, they take away a majority-minority district, or you're looking at the question of whether, you know, these districts, you know, arguably violate someone's Voting Rights Act rights, in that they, they are racially discriminatory, then you use something called voting age population. So for the Voting Rights Act, you don't look at total population in your districts, you're looking at who is 18 and up. And so when you see voting age, that's what we're, you know, we, we have that by, by ethnicity as well, but when you're analyzing these districts for the Voting Rights Act purposes, you're not just looking at the raw number of people in a district, you're looking at the number of people who are of voting age in that district. And so, you know, some populations are younger, some are older, it really does matter for Voting Rights Act purposes whether you're, you're retrogressing a, a minority group by the number of people who are 18 and up in that group. So when you see voting age, that's, that's what we're talking about.
So, so you're saying to hit for me, 73% in District Two are, are at voting age?
Yes.
Okay.
So that, that's exactly right. And over, I, I can't see it on my screen, because that, that window is on the right, but over in that blue category on the right of the table, you'll see racial demographic information by, I believe that's by voting age population. And so that's, yeah, you can move that up a little bit, Cameron.
Put it on the other side.
Yes, so racial demographics as a percentage of VAP, VAP is voting age population. And so, you know, we, we want to make sure as we, if, as we make changes to districts, that we don't take, let's say there was 60% voting age population that is Hispanic before, we don't want to adopt a district that moves it down below 50%, because arguably that could be construed by a court as retrogression. But again, you know, with, with the small changes necessary in, in the city of Duncanville, you're, we're not going to run into that problem. We're, we're not gonna make changes in significant enough numbers to- We're not going to make changes in significant enough numbers to really take away a majority from one district and divide it up.
Now, I'm thinking I read correctly that this is the same criteria. Anybody redrawing this has to include these numbers along with their presentation?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, you know, there are groups like LULAC and NAACP, and there are a lot of other groups too that have the same kind of software we have that allow people to propose plans. And so in a lot, like in big cities like Houston and Dallas especially, you'll have public interest groups coming to these, these meetings and these hearings with, with their own maps, just like these, just like those, with the data and with, with all the districts that they're proposing changing. And, and yeah, that's the level of data that we need to analyze in order to really look at a proposed plan from a member of the public.
All right, thank you.
So that we can say, "Okay, there's a problem here. There's not a problem here with, with retrogression." So, yeah, again, this, this really is like the, the keeping it simple proposed plan. And again, you know, this isn't a plan that you have to adopt. It's not set up for adoption tonight anyway, so you don't have to make any decisions about it. But I kind of wanted to come, and usually when we do initial assessments, we come and we bring a, a proposed illustrative map that just gives you an idea of what you can do. Obviously, this little piece in District Two, it's not the only piece that could be moved from one to the other. But we, we selected it more or less because it was exactly the population that would be needed to fix the Fourteenth Amendment problem and bring all the districts into the right, right distance from, from the ideal size. But it, it also really doesn't significantly change the, the racial composition of Districts Two or Three. So we can go back to this anytime this evening if you wish, and I'm leaving this with you. And I've got, I believe I've sent Krista the table of data showing what, we call this Plan A. And we'll just go from there. We'll have Plan, we have Plan B as well. But if we decide to draw Plan C, D, E, you know, some cities do like a dozen, two dozen of them. I don't think it's necessary to do that, but whatever council wishes to do, we can, we can play with it. We can pick little census blocks and move them over, and you can see what the result is. So we, this is a proposal, this, this one little piece because it was the simplest way to do it. But I want to show you Plan B as well, which Cameron can pull up. So Plan B is just another thing that Cameron and I were drawing last week that I wanted to show you. So Plan B is going to go a little bit further than necessary. You may recall that Plan A had like a 9.06% deviation between the largest and smallest district, which is just, just under 10%. Plan B would bring it lower than 9%, so it'd make your five districts even closer in size. And one way it would do that is by affecting not just District Two and District Three, but a little bit of District Four as well. And so it would bring, and I'm going to let Cameron pull it up a little bit, and he can talk about it. But essentially, like a little bit of District Four would also go to District Three. And so again, this is just an example. This is what we call Plan B. It's the third one up there, over there, all the way on the right. But now you see it on your screen as well. So again, the red outline is the current outline of the districts. So you can see District Two, what it would currently look like. There's that little notch on the southern part that has been part of District Four presently, but you see that it's now orange. So under Plan B, a little piece of District Four would go to District Three and make District Three a little bigger and District Four a little bit smaller. And you can also see in District Two, there's a little bit more of District Two than in Plan A that would go over to District Three. So under this plan, District Three would get even bigger than it, it did in Plan A. And District Four would get a little tiny bit smaller, and Cameron can probably demonstrate for you like by clicking on these census tracts, exactly how many people we're talking about. But again, it's not very big. So yeah, you want to show that, that District Four piece there, Cameron?
No problems. Yeah, this District Four piece, I think it's like a, some kind of health facility. It just consists of about 187 people that we've removed, we decided to move from District Four to District Three just because District Four was just a little bit overpopulated.
So yeah, if you can hear that, that's 187 people though, in that notch, that yellow notch, that would go from District Four to District Three. And then we can show you what the effect for, the piece that would go from District Two to District Three would be. And it's a, it's a couple of different census blocks. So that's, that's 410 people under this proposal would go from District Two to District Three. So again, you know, this is a little more aggressive than is strictly necessary for the one-person-one-vote problem. Down at the bottom of the screen where you've got our total tabulation, you can see now your smallest district is 2.9% below your ideal size, and your largest district is 2.14% above your ideal size. So this would be a total deviation of 5.09%. So that's very small. Again, this is just an option. It's just, it can be different than this, what you ultimately adopt. It can be this exactly. Sometimes cities say, "Okay, having a smaller deviation, you know, maybe in 2031, we won't have to redraw our districts at all." I really can't make any promises about that just because the growth of a city is often, you know, not equal across its, its district boundaries. You may see, you know, District Four explode in population because of a big new subdivision or a new development. But, you know, in general, this, this is an op, this is an idea of what's possible. The idea is that Two is a little too big, Three is a little too small, and Four was also, you know, a little bit above, it wasn't your biggest district, but it's also above your ideal size. So if you wanted to take a piece of District Four and put it in District Three, you can. These are things that are options to you. Yes, Mayor?
Mr. Katz, you made the comment on Plan A that no incumbents would be affected. Keep all the incumbents. Does that statement still apply to Plan B?
Yes, it does.
It just evens things out, but incumbents don't change in the district.
That's correct. And y'all can confirm it with me, but we, we had a map, we have a map that's been provided by the city of where incumbent homes are. And so we, we had that with us as we were doing these proposed plans. And so I can personally testify that I was looking at that map, and this should not change any where incumbents currently are. Everyone would still be in their own single-member district. But if anyone on the dais here believes that's incorrect, you know, please do talk to me, and because we do want to make sure that that doesn't change. We don't want to draw people out of their district if it is at all possible not to, and I think it's very, very easy not to.
Sure. Going back to your comment about simplicity, understanding that affecting only two districts is simpler than affecting three districts. But that three-district change brings us far below the 10%, cuts it in half.
That's right.
Five versus nine, basically. In your professional opinion, is it, is it better for a city to bring that, that deviation as close to zero as possible despite the fact it's a little more complicated because we're looking at three districts versus two?
That's a great question. In my professional opinion, I think it's, it's a policy decision that this council is committed. It's a policy question that, you know, your charter really does give to you. I would recommend keeping it as simple as possible strictly because we just don't know what the future holds. And with growth in the cities in Texas being what it is, it's very likely that in 10 years, your overall population will be, I don't know, 15% higher than it is today. It could be an extra 15,000 people. It could be, well, it could be more like, you know, it's hard to say, right? I guess 10% would be 4,000 more people. But you easily could have 10,000 more people in the city in 10 years. So I think it's, it's just not necessary to try to avoid having to redistrict in 2031 by adopting a plan with that in mind today. It's too hard to predict where the population changes will be. And going by the criteria we, we will adopt, you know, the, a good principle is the less people you have to affect, the better. Because that's a way to guarantee you're keeping communities of interest together. Less people are having to change from, you know, Mr. Koontz, who's been representing them today, to a different district. And really, I think the less people that are affected in that manner, probably the better. But, you know, as I said before, these criteria are all balancing criteria. There's no one of them that prevails over the other. And it's impossible to really meet every one of the nine criteria. But in general, I do think I'd recommend going with the simplest approach and affecting the fewest number of people that you can while fixing the problem.
Yeah, I just looked at, Plan A affects 213 people, whereas Plan B affects over 500, almost 600.
That's correct.
So simpler, simpler statistically, simpler mathematically in terms of the number of people affected. Plan A is simpler and better in terms of affecting much fewer people despite the fact of it being 9% versus 5%.
That's correct.
So it, this is what we as a council look at in terms of balancing these, these kinds of factors together. And going back to Mr. Koontz's great question about, you know, do we even think about 2031? I think you've answered that. It's like, it's hard for us to even think about 2031 knowing we do our best we can with what we've got right now.
That's exactly right. It's just very hard to say. I mean, I would, I would say in general that the lower the deviation you get to today, it is somewhat less likely that you would have to go through this in 2031. But it's just, it's impossible to really predict.
Sure.
I mean, growth, growth is strong in this part of the state. So it is very likely that we'll be going through this in 2031, no matter what we do today. It's just very hard to, you know, get our Ouija board out and predict that.
And it's not our job today to do anything with these plans other than just being educated with them.
Yes, and I will note that it is, is not one of the criteria for redistricting to take into account future growth. You, your criteria are to account for the growth that has already occurred and the data that you have as of the 2021 census.
Okay.
So it really is not one of the criteria to consider possible future growth.
Okay. Mr. Contreras, is he, yes, go ahead, sir.
Just an observation. I think all of us are aware. We don't really have room to grow. We're not going to get 15,000 more people squeezed into Duncanville. I think if anything is going to change, it's going to be a shifting demographics. But we won't have to deal with that until 2031 because that's already been established for what we're here for today.
That's absolutely correct.
Any other comments? Any other thoughts?
Are we discussing a possible Plan C or D at this point?
Well, that's actually a great question. There's a few options. We can, right now, tonight, if you want to play around with the map and say, "Cameron, take this neighborhood that's north of, of this street and put it in District Three from District Two." We can, we can show you in real time what, what that would do.
Because I do have some.
Okay.
Some ideas.
Cameron, are you still on the line? Can we get the maps back up? Because we can create.
Yes.
We can create Maps C and D, or just C, or whatever you desire, and have that to evaluate at the public hearing. We can also come out of this meeting and during the next week, you know, you can send me an email or anyone can send me an email saying, "Hey, Josh, you know, could you guys do a map that does this?" And we can produce that map and send it to you so that the whole council can see it and consider it at the public hearing as well. But so, Mr. Koontz, what, what map would you like to just bring up, the current map as it is?
It can be A or B. It doesn't matter whichever one.
Okay, Cameron, why don't we bring up just our, our current map, like what, you know, without any changes to it? Okay, yeah, so this is, these are the council districts today with 2021 census data.
I think this is actually Plan B, but I'll go ahead and shift it to where it's back to C.
Oh, yeah, you're right. That, I think that is, well. I think that's A. Yes, that's A. That's right. But we can change it.
You can leave, A is fine.
Okay.
Because, so A, and actually that's, that's probably better because A just shows what slight change, right, that can be made.
Cameron, can you, can you put that back in? Let's, let's go off of Plan A if we can. Thank you.
Okay.
So, and if we zoom in to that, that area there, so Candlelight Estates, Hilltop Estates, or the street names, so south, go down.
Let's go a little south, Cameron.
And so just, as we're trying to.
I think we also, I believe you, you all gave us a subdivision layer, so I can put that up if you would like.
Okay.
So this is fine for now.
All right.
Okay.
And so if you zoom in to, it's Candlelight, I believe the name's the street there, Candlelight. Right, yeah, just keep, just zoom straight in. And so there's a, yeah, so right along where the baseline is now, the red line. So there's some, you know, houses, so north of Azalea is Three, south of Azalea is Two. So possibly, you know, moving that line.
Azalea is where that little notch is, yeah, right there, Cameron, that, that blue notch that goes into Three.
Right, so, you know, adding south of Azalea, Azalea to, to Three.
Yeah, let's show that because we, we did do this in the office. It's just, it's a very weirdly shaped census block. You see the yellow area? That is all one census block. And in general, in redistricting, one of the criteria is that you don't want to divide up census blocks. You want to keep them whole. And that's just kind of the basic building block that the census uses to develop its census data. So you see this yellow area here? This, this is a census block. It's funny shaped, and there's actually a little donut hole that Cameron just added into the middle of it because you don't want to create a district that has a donut hole left in the middle. He can probably show you where that was because he went ahead and added it. Because, see that, that little green area? So that's a separate census block surrounded by a different census block. So right now, if we did this, the yellow area would go from Two to Three, but that little turquoise section in the middle would stay Two. And you don't really want anyone living in, in that kind of little space that's completely surrounded by a different district. So Cameron, go ahead and fill in the little donut hole.
And that's, that's just if we add along Azalea.
Yes, that, that's an area south of Azalea.
Right.
North of, I can't tell you what the name of that street is. Yeah, if you zoom in closely, you should be able to see what these streets are.
And I guess I'm just looking at what would happen if, if we took all of those houses that are right along that baseline and put them in the same district because it's, it's kind of an awkward thing where you've got one district on one side of the street and another district on the other side.
Cameron, can we see what would happen if that yellow area went from Two to Three as well?
Sure thing.
Thank you.
And you've already done it for around Halo, that area.
The problem, so here, here's what the problem is. Now, it added essentially, it took too much away from District Two and added too much to District Three, and now we have a deviation of 10.06%. So, I mean, I'd be hard-pressed to say that 10.06% violates the Constitution when the standard is 10%. But it does go above 10%, so it, it would be tough for me to recommend adopting a district that essentially doesn't solve the one-person-one-vote problem. It still has a deviation, even if it's just probably by like three people or something. It's, it's just that much too big.
Yeah. If you wanted to, sorry, I didn't.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I was just saying, if you wanted to resolve that issue, you could just add in a little bit from District Three somewhere else, or add in this little notch from Four or something.
Well, that's true. You could then add a little bit back to District Two because you can see District Three is a little bit too big. You could give a little bit of District Three back to District Two maybe somewhere. Or you could add like a little bit of, like maybe District Four to District Two. There's probably, maybe that notch down there from District Four could go into District Two. That, that little jagged area, yeah, that one, that guy.
You're saying that, that little section, take it from Two and put it in Four?
Well, it could go from Four to Two, and that would bring, I'm guessing that would probably bring our deviation below 10%. Cameron, do you see that, that little jagged area we've been working with before from District Four? What happens if we would put that into, yeah, that guy? If you put that in District Two, what would it do?
So that brings the, sorry?
Yeah, that would bring the deviation down to 7.18%. Now, we, you know, I'd need to look at what effect that might have, if any, on our voting age population of any group. Because you can see over on the right, the racial demographics as a percentage of VIP. That means voting age population. I'll know, I, I, we'd need to compare that to our baseline of what we have today. Because I can't right now, I can see that all the districts are below 50% for Hispanic voting age population. But I don't, I don't know for certain whether they were below 50% before, like our, our current district is all below 50%. Because what, what we're trying to avoid is the retrogression problem. We don't want to take. don't wanna take a, a group by voting age population that was above fifty percent and bring it below fifty percent for any, any district.
Well, uh, you know, if we could, uh, I, I guess I'm also using this as an opportunity to kind of resolve some, some of the awkwardness in the, the current lines that we have. Um, so, you know, I'd be interested after you look at the numbers and, um, you decide if it's something that's actually, we can actually do or not.
Cameron, do you know?
Something like this to, you know, one of our options.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, Cameron, do you know if there's a way we can compare? If, if we could create this as like Map C, could we compare the racial demographics of Map C, um, compared to the map as it is today?
Uh, sure thing. I can go ahead and pull up the chart from the initial assessment. We can use that to compare.
Thank you. So, what we would do is we'll compare our, our initial assessment of our districts today to what we have right here. And, and we can, we can look at the changes in voting age population for each of these districts. I, I don't think it would be a problem. Um, but, you know, this, this would impact more voters than Plan A would, um, just because it, it's a slightly bigger change.
Is it less than a change than Plan B?
That's a good question. Um, Cameron will be able to tell us the number of people that this plan impacts as compared to Plan B.
I believe it's slightly more of a change. But again, like you were saying, it would be, uh, the change would result in like a whole neighborhood staying together as opposed to it being split apart. So.
Yeah.
That's also something to consider.
If, in the council's opinion, this plan keeps more neighborhoods together, I mean, that is a redistricting criteria. It's something we could consider, um, as a, a benefit.
Let me ask you a question. Um, that, um, triangular, um, piece that we, he just put it back into, uh, District Four, um, that's virtually no residents in that area there.
Cameron, can you tell us how many people are in that weird triangle?
Um, so, it's a hundred eighty-seven people here, like you said.
Champions Cove, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I'd be curious what that is. I don't know if that's a.
It's a senior living.
Senior living facility. Okay.
You said the hundred eighty-seven?
Yes, about a hundred and eighty-seven people.
So, uh, in total, with this little notch plus the area that we shifted up here, it'll be a thousand ninety people.
A thousand people.
Is it a thousand?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
It's what's, it's in the corner, that upper left-hand corner on your map.
So, because if, because it's a senior living facility, you know, everyone in that group is gonna be voting age population. Um, ba- depending on the ethnic composition of that facility, um, you know, I, I have reason to believe it might be majority Anglo and therefore, you know, it could have an effect for District Two, if you were to add that into District Two. While it would make District Two bigger by total population, um, I, I would want to look at what that, adding that little triangle would do to the, um, Hispanic population of District Two. Whether it would bring it, you know, down and by, if so, by how much, um, when taken in conjunction with both these changes especially. Um, so, Cam.
Sure thing. Would you like me to pull up the, uh, initial assessment chart for the total population or the voting age population?
Let's do that. Let's do it by voting age population if we can, Cameron. Um, so we can compare the voting age population of our current council districts and compare it to the voting age population of what, if these two yellow areas were, were added, um, into, um, well, one of them would go to District Three and one of them would go into District Two.
So, uh, in this plan right off the bat, we can see the, uh, now, on the plan that we have currently, District Two is forty-two percent Hispanic for voting age population. And in the new district, new map, it's forty percent Hispanic.
So, take it from forty-two percent to forty percent?
That's correct.
Okay. So, you know, in, in, in my opinion, that's not a change that would trigger a retroaggression problem under the Voting Rights Act. Because you don't have a more than fifty percent population by any one group by voting age population. Um, and you'd be taking it from forty-two percent to forty percent. I, I don't, in my opinion, that's not, you know, significant for the Voting Rights Act purposes. Um, I don't think that would be considered retroaggressive in effect. Um, and so, it would have some effect on District Three. Um, but as you can see, the only district that is more, even slightly above fifty percent by voting age population for Hispanic population is District Five. And District Five wouldn't be affected by this plan at all. So, I do think that this plan would be a plan that you can consider. I don't think this plan, if, if you chose to make this, you know, Plan C, um, obviously, it brings your deviation, you know, further below from Plan A. Um, and I don't believe it prob- it most likely would not have any problem under the Voting Rights Act, because it, it doesn't, you know, significantly retrogress any, any population.
But, but you'll impact a thousand, a thousand ninety people?
It will affect more people. I, I wanna say Cameron said it was something like five hundred people as compared.
Yeah. Plan C, uh, with how we have it, would affect a thousand ninety people.
Okay, it is.
Yeah. And then that versus about two hundred people in Plan A and around six hundred people in Plan B.
Okay. So, it would, it would affect more, more voters in the city. Um, Cameron, uh, we had a question earlier about voting precinct lines. Do you, do we have one of the layers on our map that can show where they are right now?
Um, sure thing. It's, they're on here right now. They're in yellow. It's a little bit faint, so it's kind of hard to see.
It's, it's in.
I think I have another layer. It's like a little bit older.
Oh, okay. I thought those were just road boundaries, but they are, they are in fact voting precincts. We're gonna try to enhance that so we can see with more clarity. Okay, so the blue line, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So, the blue lines that you see here are the voting precinct lines. So, it doesn't look to me like you'd be taking people from, well, yeah, I don't, I don't believe you'd be, even under this plan, that affects more people. I don't believe you'd be taking anyone outside of their voting, uh, precinct. Because you can see that, that yellow area that would be going to District Three, it's, it's already in that blue, you know, kind of shape there, that, that, um, not a rectangle, but that, that precinct there. I wish I could use a laser pointer or something, but I don't think I can. Um, and that little piece on District Four down there, the triangle, would also be staying within, yeah. So, I could check this further later, but it doesn't look to me like any of A or B or this plan would move people from one voting precinct to another. And that, that is one of the criteria that, that we'll, we'll adopt. And it's, it's something, you know, a, a goal. Obviously, we can't meet every criteria with what we do, but I, I think any of these three would be options on that, that criteria.
From a citizen's perspective, looking at we as a council, we kind of started out trying to minimize the number of people affected. We just looked at a plan that comes up lessening the deviation from nine point zero six to seven point one eight, but affecting eight hundred more people. Is there some words of advice or counsel, as our consultant, in looking at something like this in terms of number of people affected? And how do we, as a council, explain that? Or I hate to use the word mollify, uh, those, those deep concerns of, of a thousand people that are affected by this, even though they, their voting precinct doesn't change, their incumbent doesn't change, but we as a council, I've now come, seen a plan where most, uh, a lot more people are affected than any other plan that you've proposed to us in your professional opinion.
Mayor, that's a great question. That really is the crux of the exercise. And I don't wanna do the lawyer thing and say, you know, well, that's a great policy question. And as an attorney, I don't get to make policy determinations. It's, it's the council's solemn responsibility to make policy decisions. So, I, I hate to punt that to you. Um, but ultimately, I do think it's a policy question that the council has to grapple with. Um, and, and just to lay it out, you know, just, I'll give you my, my, uh, my opinion, my advice on what drivers should go into your decision. I think you already stated it as well. You'll have criteria that, um, suggest that you should keep, uh, your districts whenever possible, so that you affect the fewest number of people as possible, so that people maintain their communities of interest within, uh, uh, in this case, as defined by the person that they voted for in the past, and the person they're represented by currently. So, on the one hand, you've got these criteria that, that instruct us to do as minim- as, as small of a change as, as you can, so that you don't take people out of their districts. You don't take away their democratically elected council member that they're part of that district of that person. But then, on the other hand, you know, you, you've got criteria that suggest that you want to keep neighborhoods whole. And I think that the plan Mr. Koontz is talking about, in his opinion, would make, you know, that neighborhood whole again, if perhaps it, in the past, has been divided between District Two and Three. So, you gotta weigh those two things. Um, is it better to minimize that deviation and try to put some neighborhoods that maybe have been divided in the past uh, between two, two districts back together? Um, or is it better to, you know, affect as few people as possible? Because they're both criteria. They're both criteria that we need to consider when we adopt our plans. And so, I, I, I don't feel like I can advise as to which one is more important. Like, like we've talked about, it's impossible to really honor every criteria at once, because some are to the detriment of others. Um, so I, I think y'all are the elected officials of the city, so you, you definitely know better than I do what your citizens and voters might want. And I, I do think that that's the kind of decision that's committed to, to the elected officials. Um, but I have said before that it, it's generally our advice to keep things simple when possible. You keep your existing boundaries when possible and make changes when necessary, um, to, to deviate from what you have in order to affect as few people as possible.
I, I definitely understand, you know, that, that is a pretty significant number of people. And so, um, and like you said, my, my thought behind that is you, you're bringing together that, that neighborhood there, Candlelight and Hilltop Estates. Again, they've got, kind of got a, a line that goes right through them. But how soon, uh, I don't know if this is a question for the city secretary, or, you know, how, how soon will, will we be able to get the options we're considering out to the public so that they can see it, uh, prior to the public hearing? Because I think that'll be important for them to be able to see this, wha- whatever we're looking at, uh, before, prior to that hearing.
Um, I would have to leave that to Ms. Aritha. I would think that we would push that out onto social media here soon, but I will let Ms. Aritha answer that.
Well, we can post it or share it as soon as council makes some decisions on what options. So, once you give us the options and they develop the maps, the maps can be shared, uh, and we can start to share it with the public in different forms.
Essentially, what we're, what we're considering, I believe, in terms of Mr. Koontz's question, is that we as a council need to adopt what we're looking at as Plan C, as a consideration to put forward to the population. Right now, we have Plan A in front of us, Plan B that's prepared. We've just made some modifications to this. We now have new numbers. In terms of voting age has been affected. The deviation's been affected. The number of people have been affected. The voting districts have not been affected. The incumbents have not been affected, I believe, from what I understand you're saying.
Yes, they.
But we now have.
Under this plan, they would not be affected either.
With the possibility of presenting three plans to the populate, to our citizens versus two, which goes to which one is simplest. And we get, you know, the, and this is, you used the word grapple?
Yep. Yeah.
It, it's something we as a council have to grapple with in terms of what we think is gonna be the best solution for our city for the next ten years.
Absolutely. And I just wanted to talk, Mr. Garcia mentioned this to me too, to, to bring this up. I just wanna talk a little bit about public hearings and, and what my experience has been and what the value of the public hearing is. The value of a public hearing is to, to have this kind of robust debate and to invite the public to come and be part of it. And maybe nobody shows up, maybe a hundred people show up. Um, but you, you, you need to have that public hearing, uh, in large part because you, you want to get an open and transparent process. You want people to come and be able to, you know, express their opinions about what you're doing if possible. So, you're going to have an, a, a public hearing on December seventh, and I think that's wonderful. It, it doesn't have to be your only public hearing, but it, it could be. Um, you could set up this public hearing for, you know, the public hearing where you open it up, uh, you take public comment, you take questions, uh, you close the public hearing, and as a council, you debate the plans a- as you see them. You could decide to, you, you can set up that, um, meeting on December seventh for discussion. You could set it up for discussion and possible act- action, which would be adoption of a plan. Um, or during the course of your discussion on December seventh, you could say, you know what, there's enough here still that we are, are dealing with and enough that we still wanna see, that we might want to have a, another public hearing altogether. We may want to adopt on December twenty-first and set up that meeting the same way. Um, so the public hearing, it, it, it's very important. Um, and I do think what, what you're talking about, getting the plans that we have, uh, developed so far in front of public eyes i- is, is very important. So, you have more opportunity. And you're developing a record too. You're developing a record, not saying you're gonna need it, but someday you may be defending these districts into court. And you're developing a record with that public hearing and with notice provided to the public, showing what kind of maps the city council's looking at, showing what the considerations are and the criteria that you're adopting. So, you're developing a good record and you have that public hearing, uh, in order to provide that opportunity for anyone to come and, and provide their, their feedback and input. And then you get to have your discussion as a council, where you consider the criteria, you consider the input you're getting from the public, considering legal advice from your council. So, I know that's a bit of a tangent, but I did, you know, I, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't talk a bit about that.
Let me go back to the question I asked a lot earlier about if a citizen comes forward with a plan. We accept the comment, but it's not for consideration.
If, if it doesn't meet all of your criteria, correct, your guidelines.
Because of what they haven't done. They haven't affected all five districts. But if they come forward and they give us a plan, as Mr. Koontz has done tonight, if a citizen makes a comment, but it doesn't address all five districts, are you and the software gonna be available for the public hearing for that s- comment or suggestion from a citizen to be inputted for a possibility?
We can do that. Um, I might.
Should we do that?
Um, I, I think it's probably a great idea to do that. I mean, you don't have to do another drawing session necessarily, but we can do that if you wish. Um, but we can be available. Um, it would save expense for the city if both I and Cameron appear through Zoom, and we can do that easily, and work through this, this same kind of thing, where if a member of the public says, I, I'd love to see what this would be, you know, the council can choose to do that. The council can choose to draw a new map on the spot during that, uh, public hearing and, and can, you know, consider a, a option D, option E, option F. So, certainly, that's something that we can do, if that's something the city asks us to.
Is it proper to do that?
Um.
I guess it's more, my, my question goes back to that a citizen comes forward, makes a comment, but they don't do what are required by the guidelines and criteria, and we say, thank you very much, but we can't consider it. But what I'm now interjecting into this, into this probability or possibility, is that they come forward, as Mr. Koontz has done, and gives us something for us to look at, um, and y'all do what we just went through here and create another plan. Should we?
I think it's proper.
Take that into consideration?
It's proper. Um, it adds more public input, um, to it. Um, it, I'm, I'm, I'll just say, you know, you're not obligated to adopt a plan just because one member of the public came and said, I would like to be in District Three.
I'm just recognizing the opportunity for them to see what they've asked for. And here's, here's what, here's what you've asked for. This is what it's gonna do. Then we, as a council, accept or, or reject.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Having done this and been in his shoes and his shoes with y'all or your predecessors, at some point in time, too much will be gathered. If you make every comment that the citizens offer and we start drawing maps, you're gonna have double A, double B, to your point. So, what, you know what the criteria is? You know that the affected districts So, what, you know what the criteria is. You know that the affected districts are Two and Three. So, before you start drawing maps, you need to focus on Two and Three. Now, it may impact Four, it may impact, uh, One, because when we did this in 2011, we changed a little bit of Five with Four and a little bit of Four with Two. And they were very minute changes, uh, because they selected, uh, maybe the council wasn't as homogeneous as it is today. So, there was a little more friction. So, when we moved the line for one district to another, there was some issues with the people involved. So, it was a little more difficult, so we made very small changes. We made the changes we had to make in order to get where we needed to go. Had we done maybe a little more change, we wouldn't probably be here today. Because, as I, I've got the census figures from 2011, uh, that we used in, like Mr. Koontz's district hasn't, has only gained, I think, 300 citizens where another has gained like eight or 900. So, you know, I didn't see a lot of growth. And that, we gained 1,200 people from our last census in 2011, so, and we're built out. So, there may be more shifting than actual growth in numbers. So...
Well, yeah, and I...
I, I think what you have to do is you're gonna just have to, how do you know when you turn the car? You just gotta feel the curve, baby, you know? And if a comment makes sense, does it make sense to the two councilmen that are affected the most? Does it make sense for the number of districts involved? And just say, yeah, I love Jeremy's comment. That's a good one. We'll go and create C. And then maybe some other citizen has a great comment that none of us thought of, and, and everyone goes, yeah, we kind of like that. Let's look at that. Then you draw the map.
Well, I...
Because otherwise, you'll be here forever.
I know, and I recognize the risk of analysis paralysis, you know, in, in terms of doing that. My, my thinking is that we, as a council, show courtesy to the thoughts of any comments brought forward to us.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Instead of just offhandly, you said, you know, offhandly dismiss those comments, but say, hey, yeah, thanks for those comments. This is kind of what happens. And then we say, you know, move on, but, you know, too many of those things will be here all night long.
Because if you have too many choices, you never get to four.
Yeah, I, I would say that, that's a great point. And there are literally an infinite number of things you could do. And so, we can't, we do have a hard deadline in January, and I don't think it's the best use of your time to come up with 47 plans, because this, this is not such a significant imbalance that you need to reinvent the wheel. However, I mean, what, what you could choose to do is you could choose to have the public hearing, and we could have our capability on hand to draw maps, but we don't have to announce it as a drawing session. So, what it means is that if something comes up during the public hearing where the council says, you know what, I want to see that. I want to see, that's an interesting idea. I want to see what difference that would make. We, we could have the capability of doing that, but we wouldn't have to go through a whole drawing session where we, we do this sort of, you know, like, okay, let's do this. Let's try this. Let's, you know, we, we don't have to, you know, it can just be like a one-off idea that we put up there and show what effect it would have. That's an option.
I need to ask, well, shoot, I have a really pertinent question, but I'm not so sure it applies to the agenda, but it applies to a public hearing. We have in effect a 10-minute limit on rules for public hearings. What happens with that with a redistricting issue?
You need to spend whatever time you need to spend on this.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. So, that, that rule is gonna, is not gonna apply.
This isn't just like a zoning case or some other matter. This is a federal, so if we were to cut the hearing off and cut a bunch of people off, that would not be viewed favorably at the court.
And that's why I'm asking the question. I want to make sure that, that we know how we're going to operate a public hearing at that point in time.
This...
Right, okay. Yeah, Mark?
Hey, uh, thank you, City Attorney. You know, I think I wasn't on the council for 2011, but, uh, you really cleared it up. I knew that was the way we drew the lines back in 2011 without even being on the council. So, I'm glad you spoke up to say that. It was more so who, where, where we could get votes from, and that's kind of why he was drawing the line, what he didn't want, you, did not want to lose votes. So, thank you for clearing that up. Uh, second, I also no, noted that we also said that, that we had a, uh, expense piece that we wanted to kind of stay within line, and that if we went outside of that, we went from range from 6,000 up to 21,000 or something, where I don't know those numbers exact, but I knew there was a wide range. And so, I want us to be cautious of that as we think about this, uh, as we go into the process. I'm all for pub, public hearing and, uh, and hearing our citizen comments, but we also just adopted that if we're going to make, if we're going to take those citizens' comments, we're going to take them here as the council and make those, make those, uh, those, those changes. But it's, but unless a citizen comes with a full plan to present, we are, we can't really take that completely, what the citizen says, on an advisement. So, uh, we're, we're only talking about, you said 1,200, 1,200 difference in our population growth from 2011 to 2021?
I think that, yeah.
Oh, she, I'm saying more, a thousand, a thousand and 1,200, somewhere close.
We were at 39 plus minus, 29, 298. Now, we're going to 4,000.
So, so instead of giving, instead of giving, and as we listen to, to, I think that's, I hear some of these comments, and, and said, as we listen to our citizens, we don't give our, we shouldn't give our citizen this full blanket page and say, we draw the map. We say, here are three items, here are three sections that we're looking at. It's the council. Give us feedback on these three. And if you want that fourth one to be us to look at, then you come up to the guidelines that we just approved and say, now give us the fourth one based upon what you did. So, I just want us to be cautious of the expense that we talked about, that it's not diluting at all the public comments, which is very important. But it's, as we listen to our citizens and we work within those three, I think that, that better serves us as making, as a body, the, the decision as we, as we go forward.
Well, Mr. Cooks, I appreciate that a great deal because, you know, it, employing these people is a factor as well in our budget. You mentioned budget. Um, we know how much this guy's costing us per hour right now. And if we...
Sorry. But the bad part is he charges more if you have to go to court.
Yeah, so...
Going to court is significantly more expensive than the exercise, I will say that.
Mark, or Mr. Cooks, I'm glad you put that into perspective. I'm thinking about, and when we have the public hearing, just being kind and, you know, kinder, gentler kind of a thing to our people. But at the same time, there's, there's a point where we have to kind of cut this thing off. So, I, I kind of, I'm agreeing with what you're saying. If we like, if we like what this plan that we're looking at, a 7.18 affecting 1,009 people, is a possibility for us to consider. We just kind of call it Plan C. You take it away from here, and when we come back on December 7th, we've got three plans to look at.
Absolutely.
We can't take a vote on that, council, but, you know, I'm looking like, you know, what's the body language?
Yeah, it's just the consensus to, to have A and B, and, uh, I'm gonna call it Plan K after Mr. Koontz, so.
We, we may, we may just call it Plan C though, because I don't, I don't want to end up with, uh, but yeah, I think that's a great idea. Um, Cameron, we, we can save this as Plan C, and I can have it, you know, submitted to the city staff tomorrow. Um, yes, sir? Do you have a question?
So, just regarding Plan C, uh, if, so this looks like fun software to play with. I, I wish I had it and I could just kind of play around.
It is, I assure you.
I probably wouldn't have the time to...
Yeah, I can say, I can test it. That's fine.
Yeah, I probably wouldn't have the time to, to, you know, play around with it and, you know, make little changes here and there. But if you guys could play around with it a little bit and see if there, if that Plan C can be modified so that maybe it's not so many people that are impacted and still keep those neighborhoods intact, um, that, that I'd be interested in looking at, at that as Plan C instead of...
I'll, I'll be happy to take a look with Cameron tomorrow. The, the problem, as we showed you before, is just that, that orange area that would be going to District Three, unfortunately, it really is just one census block. And one of the criteria we're going to adopt is, and this is true from courts, uh, courts do not like you to split census blocks. They really don't. And so, you can see that, that area that he just drew in the yellow. It, it unfortunately is one large census block with that donut in the middle. So, you can't leave that donut in the middle. Like, if we're going to do anything, we have to do it all together with the donut included. I mean, maybe a donut hole rather. Um, I'm thinking about donuts, is what I'm saying. Uh, you don't, you don't want to divide this block though. And so, the problem is this block has a good number of people in it. Um, and you're going to have to include the, the island in the middle as well. So, I'm happy to tinker with it a little bit to try to get the number lower than 1,000 people, but it's going to be a challenge just because the size of this block by population, and Cameron can probably tell us what, if you include the island, that donut hole, Cameron, how many people are in this block alone?
Just that lot, it's 690.
Yeah, 690 people. So, it's gonna be real difficult to do something that brings us into population that does move this neighborhood.
The one thing I can think of is just like moving, potentially moving this block back into Three, but that might be a little like, that would split the neighborhood up even more, might look a little odd looking, but it's, we can do that.
So, that yellow block would stay in Two, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, but, but you can see, I mean, yes, we could do that, and it would affect less people. But then you start getting into the other criteria, which is you want compact contiguous districts. And so, you'd have a District Two that comes down and kind of has like a little curly tail on the end. It, I'm not saying that this would run afoul of, of a court that was evaluating, um, the district. And I'm not saying it would even draw a challenge necessarily. It's just that one of the criteria is trying to have a contiguous, compact District Two. And it, arguably runs afoul of that. But we, we can try, you know, we, I wouldn't spend all day on this, but, you know, I think we, what I'm going to propose is that we save what you had, what we had just talked about, what you presented as a Plan C. And then I, I will see, I'll work with Cameron, and we'll try to see if we can do something that'd be like a Plan D, that would, that would take your plan, uh, Plan K, and make it just have a little lower, uh, total number of people that it affects. And we, we can see if we can do that, while still, you know, trying to balance our population and not retrogression, you know, no retro, you know, that.
While still getting agreement that that's going to be another plan, because we want to get this out on social media tomorrow.
Well, that's, that's a good point. I know we...
There's a time factor here. The quicker we get it out, the faster we, we're, the better off we're going to be.
You've got to notice, you have to provide for a public hearing.
The more they play around with it, the longer it's going to take. Plus, we, as a council, would have to look, sit, sit all day long waiting for our inbox to pop up saying, here's the new plan, guys. What do you want to do with it?
We'll do C.
And I'm not willing to do that.
Well, why don't we just do C? And then the, the information, what I took was, he's going to provide that to, to all of you.
That's right.
Right.
I will, we will provide Plan C in the morning. Um, that shouldn't be a problem.
And then we'll do Plan C, and then he'll get you the additional, uh, Koontz corollary and, which will be to try to affect less people, but that'll be for y'all.
I'll see what we can do on, on modifying Plan C.
So, we will publish A, B, and C sometime tomorrow, as quickly as possible.
I think that's correct. Yeah.
Got it.
And obviously, during the public hearing, you know, if, if y'all want to direct me to bring additional plans and present them at the public hearing, we can do that.
I don't think so. Listen, I, I think Mr. Cooks has made a valid point that we need to stay with the, with the three that we've got.
Totally understand.
And getting, and get input from those three.
And what, what I would do is I would send a blow up of the affected areas as your maps. Say the, the map's going to stay the same except for these three areas. Because if you try to publish the whole map, there'll be not enough detail, and then the first time, people get scared and then they'll show up and you won't get good input.
Yeah, well...
So, I would focus on those three areas. Here's where the proposed change is going to be, here, here, and here. And then the rest of the districts, the district lines will stay the same except for these three areas.
Well, completely agree with that, because I printed off everything that we were sent, and I couldn't see any real change. I, I overlaid them, I held them up to a light to find out what changed. I couldn't find anything to change.
Yeah.
It was, it was that complex and difficult.
After a while, you just go blind looking at the map, and you still, you know less than you did when you saw it for the first time.
Okay.
Cameron, you, you, you heard that comment. We can try to create blow ups of this area in question where things might be changing on A, B, and C.
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Well, we'll send that over when we can tomorrow.
Okay, so I think we are ready to, uh, consider Resolution 088.
Yes, sir.
Uh, consider Resolution Establishing Criteria for Use of 2021 Redistricting Process for Places One Through Five of the City Council. Single-member districts providing for review, providing for submission of city plans, providing for an effective date. Chair will accept the motion to approve.
Second.
So, moved by Mr. Cooks, seconded by Mr. McNamara. Please vote. And it's approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, having completed all business on the agenda, we are hereby adjourned at... At 8:05.